Thank you for attending the planning mission. Please know that we want to hear from you. This audience will be participating by the commission during public comment. For the item on the agenda, please fill out the card. If you want to, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the zoom screen. If you're joining us by telephone, you may draw a sufficient during call a comment by pressing nine or star nine. The staff will address you and unmute you. When it's your turn to speak, the planning staff will call your name if you're on zoom or telephone. Speaking will give you three minutes to the commission. Please note that anyone in attendance, they only speak once per agenda higher. So now we can take a roll call page for attendance.
Chair Madden.
Here.
Vice Chair DeRazo.
Here.
Commissioner Biassari.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Kuhn.
Here.
Commissioner Lathan. There five out of seven were.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the pledge of allegiance. It is trans one nation. In this vote, we will be upsets for all. Okay, next item on the agenda approval of minutes from the May sixteenth twenty twenty three meeting. Does anyone on the commission have edits, say, like the public? No edits, so we'll just take a vote through our meeting to approve them. By acclamation, yes, by acclamation, everyone agreed by vote.
First ever.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is item five. We have anyone from the public who's to speak or something not. Okay, we have none. Let's move on to the next one. Item six is announcements of conflicts of interest. We might have one tonight. Okay, so we should be sorry. Okay, moving on, item seven on the period. Four 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 San Marcos Avenue. Official news period. Who allowed rent to the facilities to operate in the second porch base at four four B San Antonio Avenue. Pursuit of section twelve two eight point zero two zero point B of the San River municipal code. Civic Star King Lodge applicant wealth family partnership owner. Use permit twenty three that be. It's part of the determines the category of the example with California environmental quality access foot. That's last one second. Steve Sullivan, you have staff presentation. Yes, then the staff presentation will be.
We'll be finished and release of the comment. Thank you for joining us tonight for time machine. Our first item is a continuing discussion of a new script for at four 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 V San Antonio Avenue. This item was first presented after March twenty first two thousand twenty three plant committee meeting. Where the commission moved to continue this item. After public comment addressed concerns regarding construction impact on the project to surrounding uses. The requirement for you is a version of the rest to allow the private facility to operate. And existing second or office space. Private community facilities are in condition of use. Which may be permitted once a newsprint with granted private permission. Just on general, she to refresh your memory. Four 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 V San Antonio Avenue is located on San Antonio Avenue. It's based by this court and T R A. It is a five thousand square foot lot. C D E or central. The subject property is a two story commercial building with three units. Two tents on ground floor and one tenant's space on second floor. Existing second floor space is four thousand four hundred and sixteen square feet. The subject property is only accessible from San Antonio Avenue. Meaning it is landlocked on all of the other three sides. And this information of this plate of this state make you the hallway. Four 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 V in the sentence story space is previous ten quarter of the space. So reviews engaged for safety. Four four two on. For a K B test site, grab craft and game shop. For four 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 seven shot for space with children's dance at valley school. Now here are some photos of the subject property. We have the front elevation taken from San Antonio Avenue. And the rear elevation taken from Masseter Avenue. This is also the private parking lot on Masseter Avenue. Now looking at the rear, the building does have an existing fire escape ladder in the second story. But these surrounding fences are existing trash enclosure means your fire escape has no circulation from the property. There are any adjacent to the subject property, there is a cafe on the left. Behind the property, there are two single family homes. Across the street, there's a hair salon and to the right, there are several small retail office and service space. All right, even on proposed project. Pursuant to that, they have municipal code section twelve point two eight zero. Private unit facilities are listed as in condition. District zone. As defined under twelve point eighty point one four seven. Private facilities of the privately built candy centers. Clubs, clubs and lodges, great places of worship, senior centers, libraries, museums and others that are private users. As you find in attachment four, the applicant represented the Pacific Star King Lodge. So the proposed use would qualify as a private community facility. All right, now let's take a look at the needs being placed. As we mentioned earlier, this needs to be a travel agency, so the second floor was fitted with several offices. And as a reminder, the total square footage was four thousand four hundred and sixteen square feet. The proposed second floor intends to conduct a full renovation of the space. And the red outline shows the vault that will be created. There is a more detailed list of the tenant improvements that will take place. We have a new banquet hall accommodating fifty people once a month. And twenty people once a week. Going to meeting room accommodating twenty people once a week. Two new offices or content and other that can be studied by the owner. Two limited restaurants. Catering prep room. The storage room and elevator. Moving on to the first floor, the applicant proposed the addition of two doors and stairway leader to second story. These additional entrances combined with California building code can ensure that audiences of over fifty have a buy two point of egress in the event of residency. And again, there are no other building sites that these two point evers can replace. They also intend to remove the existing stairway every place for the telegraph providing a year except the building. And here is the existing north elevation facing San Antonio Avenue. So notice that the four 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 V has a main entrance in the center of the building. And proposed elevation has two additional doors on both sides of the ground floor. But there's also a proposed elevator. At the roof that will be the same color material as the existing building. And this next section will go over the off street parking requirements. There is a number of required off street parking places will refer the standards based on land use. The existing travel agency is classified as office. In which one parking space was provided for three hundred square feet of floor area. The proposed names, the facilities required one parking space per square feet of public floor area. The public floor area is further defined primary floor. Open and accessible to customers of the business. But showing these storage areas and other back of house operations are not included as public. And in the green, I highlighted all the areas that will consider. You may create the moving room always. And the furniture and calculating, we have provided square footage of all the comparable public floor intercept. Which comes out to about three thousand sixteen square feet. Next, we'll take the office spaces and loads have been calculated. Next, we will take the obvious things that have proposed and calculate the required off street parking based on square footage. With the blue highlighted, the two proposed office spaces. The sum of both spaces for the office is five hundred and ninety two square feet. So knowing that the second floor space is four thousand four hundred sixteen square feet. We'll divide that number by three hundred to determine that fifteen spaces were previously required. For the proposed project, the total public floor area again is three thousand sixteen. In which eleven spaces are required as shown in green. The office usage is five hundred and ninety two square feet. In which two spaces are required as shown in blue. This is one commitment to the staff report. Though note that the report does not mention the off street parking required for office. But we had included now the reflects the uses using the best codes by the applicant. And even though the land has changed, we still come to the conclusion. That the off street parking standards are already being satisfied by the previous land use. And because the new requirement of thirteen spaces is less than the existing fifteen required parking spaces. There's no need for this proposed use to provide new spaces for paid in roof fee. Although we can expect that the department may be hired for special occasions and favors. In the green, I've highlighted the public parking lots around the subject property that the certain members of the proposed. Are we maybe. Moving on to supplemental submittals. In response to the public comments and the commission's concerns at March twenty first, plan can speak. Staff has worked with the applicant to provide change to that board. And include you. Six, seven, eight, ease. You will go over each. The attachment board provided position of four plans as provided to the applicants are attached. But these four plans are identified as presented as in March twenty first meeting and earlier in this conversation. Section A eight, which you'll find on page thirty four in the packet, looks at changes to the building. In the yellow, we have the main path of the elevator. And red, the new entrance to the elevator. And then blue, the new stairway leading to the second story space. On page thirty seven of the packet, the applicant has provided line of sight on for the proposed elevator equipment penthouse. This is to address people's experiences over the visual integrity of the building. Based on this drawing, at most four inches of the fifty inch tall elevator equipment penthouse would be visible to someone. If you're standing across the street within the building, do you think within the building across the street. Turn on to the new attachments, six and seven. Attachment six. The applicant provided correspondence between them, the ground floor tenants and the property owner regarding their concerns over construction. Among their discussion, they adjust the impacts of the new stairwell, the elevator installation and when construction hours would occur. Looking at test seven now, staff requested and received a letter from the property owner. Which states their intent to report with abuse to the applicant. Regardless of the impact on the ground floor tenants. In the property owner's written, we receive the providing these states to Pacific Star King Lodge. And they're requesting that the plan can come through determination based on the usage of the space rather than the impacts of construction. And in attachment eight, we'll find a proposed timeline for the completed the due to impetus to give a big change of construction. All right, and on that note, we'll wrap up this presentation with findings of fact. Pursuant to subsection twelve point one, one, two, point zero five zero. And use permit can be granted by the planning commission only if the proposed use complies with the findings of fact. Number one, the proposed development will not under the circumstances of the particular case. Be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare. For the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. After numerous conversations with our fire marshal and building division. Staff has reviewed the application against the California building code. Will determine that the project will not be detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Number two, the proposed development will be consistent with the general plan. And always, number two, the proposed development will not be injurious or detrimental to property improvements in the neighborhood. Or to the general welfare of the city. The applicant is proposing a private community facility. Providing a space for members and will generate issues in foot coverage in the downtown area. Further, staff finds that parking is available around and on site in public parking lots to show the proposed views. Number three, the proposed development will be consistent with the general plan. Through the San Bruno general plan, this property is designated as central business district. But its commitment permits personal, business, educational and social services. Therefore, staff finds that the project is consistent with this general plan designation. That is recognized with approval of U T zero three dash zero zero three. Based on the finding of fact or decree and subject to the conditions of approval one. To nineteen has found an attachment one. And that's all of staff, you can move on to the session.
Okay, do you have any additional? Questions for staff or any questions? I think, okay, uh, would the architect or applicant for this fight to the transmission, if you guys not require.
Even got the key, yes, please. My name is Richard Campbell, I represent Pacific Star King Lodge. And I just want to say thank you to the planning mission. Because of their suggestion, we engaged with the different parties involved. And we had a lot of good conversations. And because of that, we wanted to good neighbor, not only to our tenants, but also to the city. And so I just want to say thank you because it was something that we didn't. Do enough of in the beginning, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Hey, are there any public people would like to comment on what was just presented or this agenda? Either in person or in Austin.
I have no speaker question, there's no hands raised, okay?
Okay, great. Okay, so now I'll open the item up just for general discussion among the commission. As they want to speak.
I'm not exactly sure about the question for staff or the applicant. And I know there was some discussion of the previous meeting around whether. It was possible given building codes to do a fire escape via the exterior of the building. I mean. Ultimately, I think. You know, the the letter from the owner is right. And I think ultimately, yeah, judging on just the usage, but in terms of in the public interest, I wonder. Take a man and.
Yeah, yes, so we did ask the building official and the answer is no, you cannot use any type of fire escape. It has to be, you know, full access. So fire escapes, you know, which were back in the day acceptable ways of exiting buildings as a secondary means of access. Are no longer, that's no longer the case, you have to provide two full. Separate ways of exiting the building.
Yeah, I mean, that's a larger question than that is too old to be, that does seem odd and accepted to me. Yeah, unless I might, I think, you know, I'm definitely happy to see the only get it to use and I, you know, welcome. And you on full time basis.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, I'll just state a few things. I read through the attachments and I didn't really see any correspondence from the tenants. It sounds like the parties have kind of agreed it's an internal thing. Between landlord and the leasing, so that's that's good, I don't think we want to be the referee between two parties at all. I just wanted to state that I did notice that I have a estimate about a ten month construction period, if I remember correctly. That seems about right to be. It's like there's some usage changes on the second floor. Around some walls, you're adding some opening to the exterior. Seeing like the side of the rest of it will have to occur. You're going to be some more strengthening required to change. Certainly. And. Hopefully that's conveyed in the tenants, but I'm glad to see that. So the partner just wanted to say that. So if there's no other comments, I understand what you make emotion.
And that we approved use permit U P twenty three zero zero three based on findings back on the three subject to the attachment. The approval one eighteen. After a second.
Okay, so I think we take a vote.
Chair Madden.
Hi.
Vice Chair DeRazo. Commissioner Biassari. Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Kuhn.
Hi.
The vote is five zero with two absent, the motion hasn't.
Okay, great, thanks. I sense some belief.
Yes.
Can you go to view? All right, good luck. Okay, moving on, the next item on the agenda is item seven B two four two San Marco Avenue. Request for architectural depermit AR forty three that for five will allow residential addition that decrease the overall floor area. Since greater than three thousand square feet. Pursuant to section twelve and two hundred oh seven zero and seven municipal code. And for use of U P twenty three dash six to allow section should not exceed the four area standards. For doing the same, this will those that. Section B two. William Brennan and William and Graciela orders. Five categorically example, sequel dialogue section. Two, so still have a presentation. It's true.
So. Mission. We're answering questions in the presentation. Is that me on?
So the project site is located at two four two San Marco Avenue. And. The applicant, Willil and Gracelamuran are requesting approval of their architectural depermit AR two three down zero zero five. To allow residential addition that will increase overall board area of the residence to be greater than three thousand square feet. And approval of the use permit to allow residential addition that would exceed the permitted floor area standards. Purpose of this planning commission public hearing is to determine whether the proposed project will be compatible with existing neighborhoods character and scale. So let's begin by exploring the existing condition. The subject property is located in the La Nita Park subdivision, which is designated the R two. Low density residential building. Specifically, it is located along San Marco Avenue between San Antonio Avenue South and San Antonio Avenue. It is important to note that this neighborhood used to have a multifamily zoning that was more traditional to. For multifamily, but it was downgoing to R three residences. So we'll cover updates. This explains the variety of architectural style and sizes that we see in this neighborhood that we will explore in the next slide. So the surrounding properties vary in architectural style and size largely because they have been built. Throughout a long period of time, ranging from nineteen hundred and nineteen seventy. They also vary in height ranging from one story to three story. Many houses on this block include single family homes, duplexes, fourplexes and multifamily. Apartment complexes as well. So let's explore some of these properties. The photo you see here is the property directly to the left, which is a two unit property. This photo is the property directly to the right, which is single family three story property. Now we will look at the properties across the street, this is a two unit property. We also have another two unit property. The home to the left is also two unit property. And the home to the right is a three story fourplex. The next three photos will explore the properties along the intersection of San Antonio Avenue and San Marco Avenue. To the left, we have a three story apartment complex that has more than five units. And to the right, we have a two story triplex. Here we have a split level single family home. And a two story fourplex. Now the next three photos will showcase the properties along the intersection of San Antonio Avenue South and San Marco. Then we have the a single family home. A three unit property. And lastly, we have a three story apartment building that also includes more than five units. And lastly, we have a three story apartment building that also includes more than five units. Moving on to the existing condition of the subject site is located on a lot that measures five thousand three hundred ten square feet. And currently developed with two two stories single family homes. Unit two forty and two forty two. The gross floor area for two forty is one thousand eighty eight square feet. And three four two is one thousand one hundred eighty two square feet. The lot also includes a detached two car garage in between both properties or quote units that. Measures three hundred sixteen square feet. If you combine the two units and the detached garage, it accounts for floor area ratio of point four nine five and a lot coverage of thirty six point two percent. The subject property unit three four two currently contains three bedrooms and two bathrooms. This photo here is taken from the public right away. And as can be seen, the subject site at the rear is not entirely visible from San Marco Avenue. Now we go to the rear of the property, this is what the subject home currently looks like. These are more subject photos of the property. As can be seen, the current conditions exhibit a stucco exterior and a parapet roof. On the bottom left, we also have the existing detached two car garage. And we have more photos exhibiting this side elevations of the property. Now the proposed project is first in. The proposed project is a nine hundred ninety four square foot addition to the rear unit. Unit two four two. And this will include a two hundred ninety square foot addition to the first floor. And a seven hundred and four square foot addition to the second floor. The project also proposes relocating the two car garage and attaching it to the home. We have a two hundred ninety square foot addition on the first floor. As a result, the current one thousand one hundred eighty two square foot home will increase to two thousand five hundred thirty six square feet. As a result, if you take into account the two units, two forty, two four two and the two car garage. This will count for floor area ratio of point six eight two and a lot coverage of forty one point eight percent. And now, as proposed, subject site will include four bedrooms and bathrooms. Here we have the existing site plan. At the front of the property, we have a unit two forty. At the rear of the property, we have the subject property, which is three four two. And located in the center, we have the detached garage. It is important to note that this second two four two and the detached garage currently do not meet the zone required. The setback required, I got, the required setback parts. Uh, the subject home is located one foot from the eastern side property line. And three feet from the rear property. The detached garage currently sits on the side property line with a zero foot setback. Here is the proposed site plan. The four footprints of the two units will remain the same. But in order to meet the required setbacks, the proposed project will relocate the garage and attach it to the subject home with the first floor addition. The proposed construction will comply with the ten foot rear setback as well as the five foot side setback. Here's what the current first floor floor plan looks like. Through highlight, the two car garage is detached from the home. Here we have the proposed floor plan for the first floor, which would include the kitchen, bathroom, stairway, dining area. Note, a larger living area and the garage. As mentioned, existing two car garage would be relocated to detach the home to allow for interior access to the garage. And it will also accommodate a larger living room. Here we have the current second floor floor plan. Which. As proposed, will now include. Three bedrooms, one bathroom, an office, a laundry room, a master bedroom, which will include an in suite bathroom and a walk-in closet. But the current. Three bedroom, two bath, two bathroom will increase four bedrooms and three baths. The area highlighted in green is addition, which will accommodate a bedroom, the laundry room, and the master bedroom suite. Moving on to the elevations, here we have the front elevation of the subject home, which proposes a slightly taller roof. It will increase the height from twenty feet eleven inches to twenty two feet six inches. Down to the rear elevation, we see a different perspective of the proposed addition. And how it will meet with daylight plane. The San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines recommends that any new two story. Addition, either with the daylight frame or incorporate facade articulation to mitigate privacy concerns on adjacent properties. The proposed addition will satisfy the daylight plane at the rear, the front, and the sides. But I do want to point out that the existing grade on the southwest side property line. Is forty inches above the existing grade of the subject home. The reason for this is there's a retaining wall on this property line. So when measuring the daylight frame, the twelve feet height is measured forty inches above the ground. Which allows the addition to slightly encroach into the. The daylight frame requirement, but this is the parapet roof, which the residential design guidelines does allow for. Now moving on to the southeast elevation, we get a better. Uh, view of the proposed exterior materials, which will include exterior stucco panelized alu- alu- aluminum windows. And a flat roof with a parapet wall on all elevations. The front door will also be relocated to this elevation. Lastly, we have the southwest elevation, which we get a sense of the total size of the addition. And the residential design guidelines also recommends that two story construction projects minimize shadow impacts on adjacent neighbors. The proposed addition, as mentioned earlier, is located on a lower grade. So the shadow impacts on the neighbor, you think too, will be slightly less. The design guidelines also recommend minimizing privacy intrusion. And the proposed two story addition here has two windows on the second story, one for the laundry and one for the master bed. Bathroom. And needs to not look directly into any windows from a base of property. Lastly, you could see that the proposed addition needs the daylight plane at the meters property. So moving on to the staff analysis, I will present findings. Of preliminary conditions of approval and finally the presentation of staff. The R two development standards include the following, which is the maximum permitted floor area ratio of point five five. Maximum permitted floor area of two thousand nine hundred fifty point point five square feet. This is also the maximum block coverage. A maximum permitted impervious area of eighty five percent. A minimum required landing area of fifteen percent. And lastly, a maximum permitted building height twenty eight feet. If we look at the proposed project. It proposes a point six eight two F A R, which is three thousand six hundred twenty eight square feet. The lot coverage will be below the maximum permitted. Lot coverage with two thousand two hundred twenty one square feet, this is eighty one point eight percent of the total lot area. The proposed project meets the impervious surface requirement. We are proposing eighty one point nine percent of impervious surfaces. Landscape area is proposed at eighteen point one percent, which satisfies the landscaping requirement. And lastly, the maximum height of the proposed addition is twenty two. Feet six inches, which meets the height requirement. But I do want to touch upon the F A R and the floor area. So to recap, the maximum permitted floor area is point five five, which is two thousand nine hundred twenty point five square feet. If we look at the individual calculations for each unit. We see that both fall below the point five five. So looking closely at three forty, it's currently one thousand eighty eight square feet, which is net F A R of point two zero five. Subject property two four two and the garage will increase from one thousand five hundred forty two square feet. To two thousand five hundred thirty six square feet and, which is the floor area ratio of point four seven seven. Now, if we combine the garage and the two units. The F A R will increase from point four nine five to point six eight two, which is the reason why I'm here today. I'm presenting this project since it exceeds the maximum permitted floor area requirement. Moving on to staff finals. Staff finds that the project is consistent with the general plans and the presence of the two units. On a lot is common throughout the R two district. The proposed addition is also in harmony with the existing character and scale of the neighborhood. Which composed of a diverse range of residential uses that we covered earlier in the presentation. Some of which have are greater in mass and scale, specifically the apartment complexes that we use. The proposed addition complies with the required setbacks. Height requirements, lot coverage requirements, and landscaping requirements. The proposed addition also conforms with the design principles of the residential design guidelines. Since it will utilize similar materials as the neighboring homes and will use similar material as the existing home. The proposed addition also complies with the residential design guidelines by. Satisfying the daylight plane on all property lines as well as minimizing shadow impacts and privacy intrusion on adjacent owners. Attachment one also includes preliminary conditions of approval, if this project is approved by the planning commission. To summarize, these include that the applicant must obtain a building permit. And the project must adhere to all applicable California codes, so. Building, fire, plumbing, and local ordinances. The residents. Subject home two four two shall only be used for a single family home and the garage that will be attached shall only be used for the storage of motor vehicles. The public works department identified damaged driveway and sidewalk areas along the front property line. This area must be removed and replaced by the applicant. Before they could start renovating this public right away area, they must obtain an appropriate permit with the public works department. And lastly, the proposed project shall properly let and discharge stormwater. So to conclude this presentation, staff recommends that the planning commission approve architectural de-permit A R two three dash zero zero five. And use permit. U P two three dash zero zero six based on findings one through six and conditions of approval. One through twenty three. And the planning commission is the final approval body, so if approved, there is a technical period based. On your final action. That concludes my presentation, I'm sorry for questions.
Great, any questions from commissioners? Or staff?
Okay, thanks. Okay, uh, condition of approval number eight, that the resident shall only be used as a single family residence. Does that include that? My funny, like that with the summary? Um, so we. They could apply for a home occupation via the business license application process. So they could use their home office for a home. Is that, is that a typical condition of approval that you have for? Um, I've seen it in some single family home additions. Uh, I just decided to include it in this. Staff report just because we've seen other homes not being utilized for single family. Homes some people have been using it for L W businesses such as like auto repair detailing, which has come up recently. So we just wanted to force that they should only be used for single family use.
Okay, then that sounds like a good idea. Um, and number nine, sorry, I'm kind of reading through it still. The garage will only be used for storage and motor vehicles and not as a habitable living space. Um. What defines the habitable, like, as a wood shop or like tools? Is that what would define habitable living space?
Habitable space is usually enclosed and has a ceiling height of seven and a half feet. Um, and also our, our municipal code includes habitable space that is greater than one point. But the reason why we placed that condition of approval. Um, is because some homeowners have converted their garages into second units without the proper A D process. So that's the reason why we placed it, um, in the preliminary conditions of approval. If they do want to convert it into habitable, habitable space, they could apply for an A D permit.
Yeah, and that makes sense, that's, that's an illegal conversion anyways, but. Um, so let's, let's say they put a sofa in there and they, they want to be like a man cave, does that include a? Is that a habitable living space? So what are we telling them there they can and can't do?
Garages are included as habitable space from what I recall. Um, but I think we're just trying to get at that.
I, I get that, and I think there's, there might be some legal overreach and. Or it's, and if it's unnecessary to add this, for telling them can't do something illegal anyways. And I, and I'm worried about that legal overreach where, um, it, there, there might. There might be some connotations here that, like, they can't, they can't have a tool shop, right? And that's what I'm trying to get to, so legally speaking. And we don't want to put a burden on them. I can't, so. But tell me, I'm gonna, Michael.
So, that's great, who's pulled up the definition? Habitable space means a space that structure used for living, sleeping, eating, and cooking with an interior ceiling height of the seven B. Bathrooms, toilet compartments, closets, halls, agility spaces and similar areas are not considered habitable spaces. So I think what, what we're talking about here is that. Um, you know, in this case, it would be, well, it wouldn't really be used for living, sleeping, eating, and cooking, so. You know, having a wood shop or putting a couch there, out there, a big screen TV, I mean, we don't. We never, we never control how people utilize their garages. Um, because they, you know, they could, you know, obviously just to use it all for storage. And, um, so what, again, I think that, and you may, you know, you're, if you feel like you want to include more language in the condition. Um, that's fine, but it's, it's really getting at the, the wholesale conversion of the space to add a kitchen. And sleeping quarters, that's usually the kitchen and the sleeping quarters are what we consider. Um, you know, the, the primary habitable space. Habitable use, um, you know, that, that definitely needs a building permit. Because there's, you know, requirement, like, all requirements coming from its eating requirements. So like, for example, watch, not part, you did, but if you have space and bedroom. Space and living space that is required, you get it, those things require building minutes.
Yeah, and I mean, so if they want heated and if they want to. And I, I would, I'm not going to ask for any changes. Um, I do think that there's things to be looked at again, and just make sure that. It's not, it's not putting a burden that we don't need to put, right? We, of course, we would never force that they can't have a sofa out there, but. Take it easy, okay? Great, thank you, anyone else in the question? Okay, um, just a couple of verifying things on one of the slides. Findings.
Findings of if all couple things, it does not set backs, correct?
The entire home, especially the eastern rear property line, but except for the four second addition does comply with the setup.
Yeah, true. So it's all setback. And then the daylight plate is not satisfied with every instance, correct? Sure, this is where it is obstructed by a parapet, correct?
Uh, but east and roof needs a parapet to encroach into the daylight. Or resident, with our guidelines, um, but you weren't. No. I'm sorry to show that.
Okay, and these are considered two separate avenues. And we're twenty more percent overview of the, or that they are lot coverage. All questions I have. Actually, um, okay, does the, um, not business being or the architect, but what's not mandatory?
I can get rid of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
That probably is like a broken record is the last time that, the reason why we're going is to keep, you know, one of my kids decided to go into bakery, into baking, so that's why we're extending the kitchen a little bit and then I have my sixteen-year-old who's actually trying to get into art, so which would be, for the work that I do, I'm an electrician, but I do my PM job, so puts me outside, I have to do my work, so that's the reason why this is, you know, we're excited to present this too. See, I've been, you know, where, you know, fingers crossed that things did happen, but but thank you, thank you for spending the time. You're pretty good.
You're just nothing like amateur at being practicing, not like setting up a cottage.
No, yeah, exactly. No, this is just the starting, uh, course. Yeah, so hopefully you take it to the next level. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hey, um. Hey, uh, are there any public comments or speakers? Person, but perhaps a group?
No, stick around there.
Okay. Move forward then. Now we'll go, uh, we'll close public comment. By the end, okay? Um, and now, uh, time for my mission to have any of their key success.
I didn't observe it in regard, because that fact is actually affecting any existing setback violation, so I think it's related, it's hard. But that would be a problem. That is what, or, yeah, all fair. Yeah, I think, I think, given the character in the neighborhood and it's significantly larger buildings with the department. So.
And I have something for the, uh, then much.
I think, uh, that we approve, uh, our catch review permit AR twenty-three, zero zero five. Use permit two two three, zero zero six, based on like six, approval one two three. All time.
All right, so it's a big book.
Chairman.
Hi.
Vice Chair Duraza.
Hi.
Commissioner Viasari has recused. Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Coop.
Hi.
The motion passes for one review zone two.
Great, thank you. Good luck, people.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, who's going to be agenda of your item number eight, conduct of business? We have to give it, oh, there's, there is that. Okay, so I am there. Uh, very similarly, item nine, we need that.
Yes, so we have several, um, informational items. Uh, it is likely that we will be canceling the July thirteenth ARC meeting and the July eighteenth PC meeting just because we don't have any HCDs that are, you know, and we had, we're gonna hit those meeting dates. Um, but we'll let you know, obviously, if that changes. Just also wanted to let you know, we are working on um responding to the comment letter we got from HCD for the housing element. We anticipate that that will, you know, with with our consultant, uh, because we have to go into a lot of detail. Then we'll be working on that through the summer, so um, that will likely be coming back uh before you in the, in the early fall. Also, I also, we had talked briefly about this at our last meeting, but wanted to uh, just get a concurrent, um, and it seemed like we had that last time, but a formal concurrent, that it would be okay to move our ARC meetings to all, all to the second Thursday. Um, because right now it's the Thursday before the planning commission, so sometimes it falls on the second Thursday or the or the third. Looking at our calendar for this year, it's almost always on the second. I think there's only one time it's on the third. But the reason for doing this is so that we can move the meetings from the senior center back over to city hall. Uh, Route one fifteen, we feel that that's a better location for public access and 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 just also better for staff, so um, is everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. Um, and then finally, um, there is, um, uh, thank you, Arus, for bringing this to my attention. Um, we, uh, got an email from, um, the, our planning, uh, it's the Community Planning Collaborative. There is the consultant, so that is, they're the consultants for twenty-one elements, which is our housing. Um, countywide housing, staffing, and they do a lot of other things uh to assist uh local jurisdictions. And then it recently um kind of extended some of their their offerings to include planning commissioner training. And so, um, the email, and I'm told, reporting this email to you in just a moment here. Um, there is a League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy in Long Beach in March. If you're interested in attending, you can let me know, um, March of twenty twenty-four. There's also, uh, an institute for local government, uh, planning commissioners handbook, which I just, I I wasn't aware that this existed. And so, um, included emails, a link to that, and that's a really good resource. Institute for Local Government has really great publications. Um, there is also Institute Local Government Virtual Commissioner Training uh this Friday all day, which I know that's very short notice. Um, but if you did want to participate in that, it looks like it's free and you may be able to just participate in part of it. Um, finally, Planets, Planets and which is kind of a planning website, um, has a planning commissioners training, um, which is online, and so that is also available to you. Uh, if you were interested in taking that at any point in the future. And we can register you for that, so just wanted to make you aware of those opportunities if you're, if you're interested. And that concludes my, my comments.
Okay, great. Cheers for the August ARC, it's a trial.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah. Yeah, why, why would you do that? You could take, uh, if anyone already knows their.
So what's the date of the, uh, I said, where do you stay? So you could say.
August tenth.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Okay, got four, so that's great. And we'll jump in. Okay, thank you. All right, okay, so I'm Ted, his college.
Very much, but having attended the planning insurance training session. So, okay, elements. So many different like industries involved program, but I thought it's, uh, home brawl, APACA, American Conference of State California. Um, it was, it was an interesting session, I thought. It's just getting to the main plan. So these five folks from they, challenges, months of, you know, property slips or building. Um, so there was a, it was an interesting nine. And that's, that's obvious. Good chance.
So we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for the news, uh, modern.
For two days.